Four thousand medical golf runs a year.
How many do we do a year on average?
About eighty to ninety, so we're a little guy.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Small fish.
Right, so if we're not missing some runs, you know, it's gonna affect us more than City of Conca. You know. And so in the books, it like said, Hocken had just gone to him and he can all kind of go. And they're crying foul because they're paying a higher percentage. And Hookset, but Conca is already, Conca is like at four, Hookset was at five, I think, hospital was at seven, and Hockin ended up like at six, so.
Yeah.
Uh, you know. I'm not, I don't know, you negotiate a little bit and I'll. Well anyways, that's where we're at on the end of it.
So no uh big surprises you foresee between now and December?
So. Age or breakdown, but okay.
Getting old, but still in good shape, I guess.
Anything for you, you telling?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. Alright, Chad, you're up.
Alright.
You know you ought to just know at least times, either don't put a time or you that take them skip a lot, cause we never.
Yeah, cause we are not on.
I probably wasn't looking at the time on the side of that.
We never are on time.
Um, I have in your packet, the um RFP for property liability.
Alright.
This one here, I'm hoping to get approved tonight because there is gonna be some um information that I'll need to be providing to the interested party who wants the bid.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they cannot do it in a short turnaround, so I think my time period will be a little bit broader as to when I can get them to submit their quotes. Um, one thing that I did find out after speaking to uh Primex is that our contract, and you'll notice it's in here, just came in this week. Workers' Comp Insurance and Unemployment Insurance is currently contracted with Primex until two thousand seventeen. Which requires forty-five days written notice to terminate. Um, the past ten years, the workers' comp insurance rate has been five hundred dollars, it's gone up slightly this year. Um, and that's due to a lot of usage of.
I just don't, it's uh, I'm not following it, cause I mean, workers' compensation Department Labor, unemployment security is what, and they have the accounts.
Allison, could you help me with that?
I guess I'm.
He's, he's trying to say that the Primex is through the Department of Labor.
Well, no, the, the particular insurances, you know, like workers' compensation program, you know, if we lay, you know, Brian Pike off tomorrow. And I've been working here ten years, and I file for unemployment compensation.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to the unemployment securities.
They handle it through this, cause we have had to submit paperwork for individuals that have filed a claim and they.
Unemployment.
For unemployment and they.
Yeah. That's unemployment right here.
Right, and they handle all the paperwork that has to be submitted to the state.
So you're using as a third party instead of just us saying, okay, here you go.
I'm not sure if that's. I don't know, I never, I just know the unemployment bill comes from Primex and it's five hundred dollars.
Right.
Cause I mean, usually as a rule of thumb, everything, I've been aware of it, unemployment, you get unemployment security will send you the bill, you pay them, it goes into their fund. You know, workers' comp, Department of Labor does the same thing, you know, it's based off your mod rate and all that stuff, and they send you the bill.
Workers' Comp is paid through Primex.
Correct. He's, he's saying.
Well, Primex hold, just managing the paperwork and.
That's what.
Is that what you're doing?
Well, for workers' comp or?
Well, for both, I think, that's what I think I'm hearing.
When I, when I have an injury, I, I have to notify Primex.
Correct.
Yeah, I think they're just handling the paperwork, so.
Yeah.
They handle the claims and the paperwork and.
But they're not actually paying the claim. The claims being paid either through unemployment securities or through workers' comp.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, workers' comp would be paid through workers' comp.
Right.
Unemployment is through the state of Hampshire.
Yeah.
We're about to say it once.
Well, you know, we go through Primex and I don't know why, it's always been like that.
So, that must be a third party administrator then.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, okay. That's what it is.
And we pay a flat fee for the town, is that what it is?
Yeah, we get a whole lot of holiday credits, so we're gonna pay.
Yeah, right, I know that, but I'm just asking the question, normally that would be paid as a flat fee one time.
Right. Don't pay the flat fee then a monthly fee.
Oh, there's a month on the top of that?
It's broken down in monthly fees, installments.
Right.
Oh, yes.
For workers' comp.
For workers' comp, yeah.
Whoa, our loss ratio in twenty fourteen was zero percent, yet our twenty fifteen loss ratio through June was two thousand four hundred ninety-four percent. What the hell happened?
Every employee took an injury.
Just the hell? That's quite the jump.
It is, it's serious, how do you do that?
I don't know.
I don't know, the last, what, fifteen year, oh, ten years since you've been here, it's been five hundred dollars.
That's, that's unemployment, so I mean.
Well, that's unemployment?
That might be part of a pool.
I thought you said it was Primex.
No, it's Primex, but it's unemployment.
It's the five hundred dollar charge Allison's jumped, but that may be because we're part of a pool, I don't, I'm not sure if I understand.
Yeah. That makes two of us right now, cause I don't understand.
Do you want me to ask her for explanation?
Please.
About those services?
Please.
Yeah, what is it, the doing force?
I, I've heard of her, I just know I do workers' comp.
Yeah, well, tell us a little bit of the middle name.
I have to do an unemployment report.
I know they offer.
Yeah.
Can I shed some light on that for you?
Please.
Primex is a third party administrator.
Okay.
The fee is because they're a third party administrator for unemployment compensation, cause the town's a reimbursable employer. So if you have someone that collects and exhausts your account with unemployment, which because you don't have an account.
Yeah.
You're reimbursable, they end up, the town has to reimburse, so Primex will bill the town for the monies collected. And you're right, workers' comp though, they're the administrator, even though the overseeing of your policy is Department of Labor. So each section is overseen by those different departments, but they're administered by Primex for you. I think they do most of municipalities.
Yeah, I think so, cause I know like with the state, they don't pay unemployment compensation, unemployment.
Correct, yeah, states reimbursable, hospitals, nonprofits are reimbursable employers, they don't pay unemployment compensation tax on their employees.
Well, when they do, they have to pay.
But if you have an employee that you lay off, who can legitimately collect.
Right.
Then you end up reimbursing dollar for dollar, plus the five percent administrative.
Cause I know the um, yeah, the state pays a hundred and five percent of the unemployment, like they have to take away people off, cause they don't pay it at all. So we are on the same boat then.
Okay.
They're on the verge of going out of business.
Who is?
Primex.
Uh, they're going from some careers, cause they're still, they still do all the nursing homes and hospitals.
It's not Primex, it's um.
We have some penis.
Oh, yeah, that's the Hampshire Health Trust.
Yeah, no, no, it's the Health Trust, which is what we're putting our, our PLT health.
Health Trust.
That's a whole different thing.
Oh, yeah, I get that mixed up.
Twenty fourteen, and this year we had something.
Same business, they're in the same business.
Yeah.
This year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
From employment?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
No, not from employment, for injury.
Oh, well, it's unemployment.
Oh, that's the unemployment one?
We, we have, we have one.
Yeah, we had a, um, some that were recently, they left our employment that have filed, yes, yeah.
Right, ah, and that's why we have to reimburse them for that.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why they have to.
But uh.
Yeah, confirmation process.
Yeah. Yeah, alright, that means it's, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Is that something that we wanna look at and bring in-house and have us deal directly with the, the Department of Labor? Because we don't have the staffing, and I think the filing period is critical, there's paperwork that has to be done, I mean.
No, I would agree with you, unless we have, well, like a full-time person that could help.
Yeah, there's just.
Taking track of that, you know.
I mean, they're very, very helpful, they do give training courses for a number of things, you know, for um not creating hostile environment, to how to handle the diverse. Um, generations, I've taken a lot of courses through them.
Oh. Not many other people from Primex are pre, pre-versed. Yes, man.
So that said.
So what do you have for me?
The RFP have removed the workers' compensation and unemployment language, and that was pretty much because um PLT had offered us, or they.
Well, I was gonna say, I see a lot of yellow on these things and question marks, so you want me to just go page by page and?
Yep, yep, um, I don't know if you have the first pass.
I got this passed, whatever one you gave us.
Alright, so the, what I highlighted on your copy is yellow, and it's just primarily picking off the words workers' compensation and unemployment coverage.
Watch your football, much more.
Let's change to page one. On page two, term. I last, the first pass I gave you, I had a bunch of language that I didn't think applied.
Yep.
I kept the first line, which says, the contract and all obligations of the parties here under shall become effective on a specified date. The other information didn't apply, um, it's more on a, the construction level.
Yep.
Um, contract price, this is a negotiated, I, this is more on a, again, a contracted providing services. And that, and then delivery was the same thing, invoicing was the same thing. So that was, that's the section that was taken out of terms, I kept the one line, and then I removed, if you look at your first version that.
Oh, my first version.
I had with you.
No, I left some stuff in, I had changed it.
Okay, so I can show you this one here.
Yeah, I believe you.
So then when you go down to the page two, the bottom is another yellow line, the bullets. Uh, if you look at event of default remedies, I removed everything that did not apply. The first three were kept there, the second, uh, the number of giving, uh, give the vendor a written notice specifying the event of default. I left that there, cause it, it somewhat applies, I did change the thirty days or agreed upon notice of termination, because most of them require forty-five days. So I left that to say if they, whoever gets the awarded bid, we could negotiate that term of um, you know, termination. And then everything else did not apply, event of default is not timely remedy, terminated, that doesn't apply, giving vendor written notice. And then it goes on for a portion of the contract price and blah blah, so these numbers specifically did not uh apply, and I have them on your first pass, you've lined out. Then I left the last one, which says, treat the agreement as breached and pursue any of its remedies by law or equity for both. So that kind of fits in this.
Yeah.
Um, now this is our section of our template, then the uh page, the next, the start of page three, those stayed the same. Until you get down to the very end, but the, I think construction's the wrong word, I need to, that was uh just the standard word, so do I wanna say?
Well, it's the construction of agreement in terms, basically, it's the construction of the, you know, the contract.
Is that the correct way to work that?
Yeah, it's not construction, as in like building something.
Right, okay, I'm not sure, I just highlighted for the question, is that?
Yep, this is initially construed in accordance with the laws of state in Hampshire and buying from near as of benefits.
Which is. Yeah, so nothing changed in that whole page, and that's just a question, I have the word that we have there, so you feel that that's adequate for?
Yes.
Okay, and we go to page four, there's absolutely no changes from the first pass.
Yeah, I didn't see yellow, it's not for the.
Page four, um, I just have, you know, the uh bid award date for a period approximately eighteen months, cause this one that we currently have expires in July first, so.
You wanna get it on a calendar year basis?
Get on the calendar year after the first month, so eighteen months would get us back on track. Uh, so those are the changes in red that I made for the contract term. And again, I also included what was in the prior page, that vendor thirty days or an agreement, agree upon a notice of termination writing. So that was the only change I made there, the rest of the body here is the same, it's on a template. And then we move on to exhibit A, exhibit A is what I received from um Health Trust. And the language is very um helpful and useful, again, I only, in the title, I removed the workers' comp and unemployment language. Leaving it with just property and liability coverage. Um, we can fill in the dates, again, I'm gonna have to give these companies a little bit more time, cause I've been gathering the um current contract I have. The loss run I have, and uh, let's see. A claim history I can access through the website, so um, the highlighting on page five, it says, again, that put the term of eighteen months. That's all, this exhibit A is a template from the Health Trust. Um. And then I, again, on page seven, I removed eight, it was A, B, C, D, and I removed uh two, because it didn't apply, which would be workers' comp. And workers' um unemployment and workers' comp, so I just shifted that to three. Um, on the back page again, after I printed it, I noticed that the header included workers' comp and unemployment, so I'll be removing those two there. And then the premium summary, I have a yellow highlight on page eight there, just below the title. Page eight.
I don't have page eight.
I do.
Page eight of ten?
No.
Did I miss it?
Mine starts at seven, well, I also have a sheet here that says I'm working on roll-off containers, so I, I have something that's obviously not correct.
Oh, I must have.
That's okay.
I was printing a lot tonight.
That's all right, roll-off containers was page six of seven to eight.
Like any, like any roll-off, I probably have.
Yeah, maybe, and then page seven is, that's okay, I mean, that's all right.
Oh, it could be. Oh, okay, um, so the premium summary on page eight of your second version. Again, I had lined out on your first copy, exhibit C for insurance, but this template asks for, previous page.
Well, they're insurance companies, so they should have proper insurance.
Yeah, right, well, they, it says it earlier on, that they have to provide proof of a certain level of service. Um, and then that was, uh, let's see here, response form, name of coverage, AM best rating, and AM uh best financial size. So um, the combination of what is worded in the beginning of the template, along with, it was like.
Just repetitive.
Yeah, being repetitive, so I just removed that, cause I had highlighted it on your first pass, the exhibit C. And that brought us to qualifications of vendors, so I just popped that up, popped that, two, those two paragraphs there, and list of clients.
Yeah.
And then vendor information, and then I added the signature page.
Yes, alright.
To make it uh more official. And then the back page, signature of the selectman, and then the offer and vendor, as we have in the others.
Looks good. Always concerned. Now, what?
I'm not gonna even put this in and then ask for a, a response, but like a closing date in two weeks, I'm gonna have to get more, like, three to four weeks at, at the office. I do have about five vendors already that have either stopped in the office, shown an interest and wanting to get, and then I got something from the mail and a, and a postcard, so he'll be added to my list.
Have you talked to them, I assume, what the, you know, reason we think would be a turnaround for them to get this, the information?
Um, it was actually Primex that I, oh, no, it was, um, let me look, I better look here, Davidson Toll. They also gave me um the things that I should be looking for.
Yeah.
And. Yeah, it was Davidson Toll, um, she said it would take a few, she was willing to help me with the RFP.
No, I don't know.
And I said, no, I said, we've got our template, I've already got a, um, something that really sounds like they've, um, Health Trust has put everything together that we need to ask for.
Yeah.
And then they, they have to follow up and say, I want this, this, and this.
Yeah, you can't have the, the fox watching the hen.
Yeah, he don't want one of your bidders.
Right. Right, right.
No, cry foul on heart.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't blame them.
So this is strictly the, our template, meshed with the uh Health Trust uh recommendations.
I just had a thought and I lost it, shoot.
Oops, fox in the hen house.
Yeah. Oh, the information you put together, that, you know, Davidson Toll's like, you know, we'll be looking for this, 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 and this.
Yep.
Is that listed anywhere here, or they need to contact you for that information?
Yep, yep, um, it would be um. On page seven. Uh, let's see. Number fifteen covers the loss services, um. And then it also says, uh, to send an email to me to receive attach, attachments electronically, so the.
But we don't list the, the attachments, do we?
No, we can't.
Right.
Um.
We can't list the attachments, we have available this, 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 and this, the, the title of the information, we're not giving them the information, but we, this is available for, you know.
Right, which is the property liability current membership agreement.
Oh, these, okay.
The schedule of exposures.
Yeah, okay, that is fantastic.
And then the property liability claim history, so I have to give them X amount of years of all of this information.
Right, but I thought they had like a list of like almost a dozen different things, wasn't it, from Davidson Toll?
Right, but they're all.
Condensed of these.
Well, they're in here, they're in the body of the, sort of, of this.
I thought it was information they were looking for.
No, no, it was, it was recommended language to be used in here, and I didn't wanna go there, because it was very similar to this, and this was a template.
Yeah, very, got you. Yeah.
That could be, then if, when they ask for the information, then I can provide all that information.
Okay, gotcha. Right. Got you, I don't know, we don't, definitely don't wanna put that information out there to the public, that's, that's gotta be secured.
No. No, we would imagine so, that could be confidential.
Yeah.
If it was, yeah.
Absolutely, no, very good job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So that got it down, I wanted you to get as close to a clean copy as possible, I found you problems, but we're down to ten pages, or, yeah. Five pages back to back, so ten instead of the thirteen that we originally had.
You got them for this?
No.
Wait, that, you know.
So I think I'm probably looking at shooting for if I can get this on the paper tomorrow, um.
So do I give it four weeks till you get this done?
I'm gonna shoot for three weeks, so that I can try to get it, um.
Can I talk to them in November?
One, two, three.
There we go.
If I can shoot, get them back in for the sixteenth of November, then we can talk about it on the nineteenth of November.
Yeah, that's right, when's Thanksgiving?
And then.
The following week.
The following week, because then we lose almost a, well, we lose a selectmen's meeting, so I, I need to get it back in before then, so we can talk about.
Right. That one stays on Wednesday, right?
Yes, they love it.
So yeah, yeah, cause last year we lost, I think we lost one, lost two in a row.
Yeah, yeah.
Or two in that month.
Yeah, so if I can shoot to get them back in for the early part of that week, the sixteenth of November, or even the eighteenth, then I can pull together there.
That's it.
Get the, uh, RFPs in, and we can look at the nineteenth.
I'm good with those, did you go with those?
Yeah, I'm fine, yeah.
That's it.
Shoot for November, November.
Finish your tweaks and send it up.
Yeah, I think, so I think the seventeenth.
Very nice job, thank you.
Alright, one down, we've got many more to go.
Now, what was that about, um, Primex, if, if I told you something, if they, they put a bid in for it, where they have currently our workers' comp unemployment?
Yeah, but she talked to me about it, cause she knew all the problems that Health Trust's having, and she expressed that she was interested in um bidding on the property liability. She said, make sure, keep in mind that if you choose us as the awarded company, that uh we will get ten percent off the current Primex contracts. Along with a, and a discount on, yeah, the larger the.
Also, the more you take you back on it, yeah. Sure, and last year. Like progressive bundle.
They.
Yeah, no bundle, yeah, yeah.
Last year they were cheaper.
They were cheaper.
Yeah, we're getting holiday credits.
Oh, she has the holiday credits, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, if you put the prices together, it'd actually end up getting cheaper that way.
To go the other way, yeah, so they'll be bidding on this.
Interesting. Okay.
So it's already getting a lot of phone calls, but it's good set up. Okay.
It sounded far more, but it'd be nice to get a whole bunch of bids and thinking, so I was like, um. Add us up, you can just do it, so it's not comparing apples to oranges.
For what?
When we get the bids in, so it'll be easier.
I asked her to list it separately, cause she'll provide a cost, and then she'll, you know, include in her cover letter, what, what the additional signals will be.
Alright, anything else?
Um, a lot of it's in the box.
Okay.
Um.
Well, I see we still got some stuff here, that's.
Yeah.
I think that.
Yep.
We want.
Wanna jump into those?
Might as well.
You know?
Oh, Kelsey Road.
Oh, well.
Which one do you wanna talk to first, off to them?
Yeah.
We had a quote from Richard Bartlett Associates to do turnaround easement for us. A gentleman asked me to reach out with surveyors, job applied not long ago, and it was late, it was Friday, that he was not available, he was just straight out busy. So he referred these guys to me, I got the email through the building department, and no sooner than I hit send, than I got a telephone call from the gentleman saying, oh, we'd be interested in doing that, so. Responded very quickly, and he's been working with his supervisor. They're on Concord, so.
It now looks like a grand total of twenty-two fifty, plus mileage. And copies on whatever other office, so I'm sure they're probably about another hundred bucks there.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be twenty-five hundred bucks or less.
Um, yeah.
Rough estimate.
And this is the only guy who responded? Wow.
You know, Fred is also trying to reach out to different surveyors.
Who is?
Fred.
Come on?
For the uh formulation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this is one that he's getting a response from, and he's supposed to be meeting with them.
Really?
And then, uh, that, those costs with the, um, town line money, it's, Gulf Town's supposed to go in.
Yeah.
In the cost, yeah.
Wow. So you, um.
Well, we're running out of time.
No, we don't have a choice here, no, we gotta, gotta do it twenty-five hundred bucks, is what you wanna, um, is that what you're proposing, that we set as a max?
Yes.
Or what if it comes in something else, you could commit at something else, and we're guesstimating.
Well, sixteen fifty plus six hundred for the steel pins, gives us four, and so we're gonna ask for four steel pins.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
That's what it was, one each corner.
Right.
That's twenty-two fifty, you know, then you have expenses incurred on their office, on our behalf, you know, copies, mileage, et cetera, I mean. If it's another two hundred fifty bucks, I'll be.
So what are they, they're coming from Concord, you said?
Yeah, so the mileage is.
Now, what, what are they paying?
They're on the most state streets, so it's not that.
Eight something like that now?
Yeah, I mean, you're talking.
He's only making one trip, oh, I'm silly, right, one trip?
Yeah, yeah, he's already, he's already talked to Jeff, uh, Jeff, and I've already given him sections of the plan that was filed.
Mike's popular.
And I said that, you know, he has to ignore the plan itself, except for this little section, and I drew on it right there, that's it.
Right, it's the only thing he needs to care about, yeah. Yeah, he's talked with Jeff, so Jeff's laid it out for him, it's fifty-five, seventy?
Yeah, 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 seventy, seventy.
Yeah, because there was a tree in the way, as I recall.
Right, so they're gonna shift it, just, or it's not.
They're just shortening it up.
Exactly.
Yeah, kinda shortening it up, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, well, the motion looks up to bid. With a not-to exceed of twenty-five hundred.
I'll second that. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw the smoke.
When, when, when we were talking to the owner. About an easement.
Yeah.
This was all before he put in a petition to claim that that's a road. So if we spend money to set up an easement, and then you guys vote to make that a, a road. Aren't we gonna be spending money maintaining that road? It's not a class, what would it be, unmaintained road?
It's unmaintained, yeah, it's unmaintained.
It's a class, it's a classics road. So you wouldn't be spending any money on it, it's just, I mean, I think what we're being asked to is say, where's the road?
Right.
Not, not to do anything else.
Right.
And then that still could end up going to court and be overturned, changed, and God knows what else, so we don't have anything definitive.
Yeah. Right, I, I think we'd be at risk not to go forward with um an agreement to easement.
Well, so that's a recommendation from the town.
The town council.
It's one, yeah.
Does easement stand separate from the road?
From the road.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Yeah.
Right.
Whether we go that direction or we go the other direction.
Cause I, and I also don't think this road issue's gonna get decided quickly.
No.
You know, it's just. You know, it's just my, I mean, I don't know enough about it, because we haven't ever gone through this process, but I, I just don't see that ending in November, just.
No.
I just don't, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't.
And we still have to talk to town council, we got a lot of questions, a lot of, you know, what?
Right, yeah. And then we have to have a deliberation come up with our decision, so it's not gonna be done in November, I would think.
Yeah.
I think we're looking.
Maybe, but it'll be late November.
Yeah, yeah, and then, of course, I would assume that there's an appeals process and.
Because you know someone's not gonna like the answer, so they're probably not going to court.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, well, I think the odds are pretty good.
So, and, and.
And, and it's a little.
I understand where you're coming from, you don't wanna spend the money for no reason if it's a town you wrote there.
Yeah, you don't wanna spend it twice.
Yeah, well, the other, the other question I had is, uh, when we were there, they were talking about starting it where the wall was and coming out fifty feet.
Yep.
And, but apparently now, it's coming out further, and it's putting that telephone pole right in the middle of, of the easement.
It's not in the middle, it's not.
I think, I think you put it.
Or it's, it's almost in the middle, it's, it's much more in the easement than when we were talking about.
I think Jeff said he put his stakes, so such that he'd be going around the telephone pole and going in.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't been out there since Jeff was there.
No.
So we won't get to see that until the sixth, because we haven't been out there, so.
Yeah, he said he's taking it out where he's comfortable with it.
Okay, right, and, 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 you look at that map, it looks like the, the telephone pole.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's the surveyor's thing, saying where Kelsey Road goes, that's not.
That's the prominent location where the surveyor says.
So hypothetically, say, say Mike's surveyor is correct, and that is Kelsey Road, the telephone pole, like you say, is like right in the middle of the road, so speaking. We do this easement, and that's on another section, that is gonna be deeded, that's gonna be our easement, regardless if that is Kelsey Road or not, so we, we'll be actually going beyond
Oh, Kelsey Road, yeah.
what is, what they're claiming Kelsey Road is.
What the.
Correct, and that's putting it in a, in a deed, so that the next owner
Yeah.
can't come around and say, I don't want you turning on my lawn, because the road is over here, but we have a deed at easement saying, this, this is the area that we want.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and speaking of all of that, it's.
Basically, it's insurance, unfortunately.
Have, um, have the people from that rod and gun club shown up with any documentation?
No, I've, I have a contact for that, and I did ask them to get something to me, I can pay for the deed at the registry, I printed it off, but it's got, I have to do an image of, it's the Hillsboro County, so I have to do, oh, you know what, I can go down to Goffstown, they probably have a copy in their file.
Yeah.
We'll just go down to Goffstown and get a copy.
We should get that, yeah.
Yeah, we do have the copies, yeah.
Yeah, because we have to have the, for that thing.
That would probably be the easier way, just go to Goffstown and say, I want a copy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hmm, yeah, it'd be nice to have that.
Yeah, it would be nice to have the, and they were supposed to get that to us, so the fact that we don't have it makes me a little bit wondering if it, if it exists or not.
I did, I, like I said, I had to take a picture of half the deed and then scroll down, because it's got that draft thing.
Yeah, I understand. Yep.
Not an official copy, and it was hard to read, I, in a print paper, so I really need a copy.
All right.
I mean, yeah, I, I'm right there with you, I, you know, it kinda hurts me, I haven't spent money where it could pot, you know, potentially, we could end up with the road that belongs to us anyway, but if something goes south, it's good insurance.
Well, we keeping track of the money that we are investing into this easement and everything?
The town attorney, it's easy enough to put, pull together, so.
Is it? Yeah, I'm just kinda curious, you know.
Yeah, because I think Allison pointed out, she says, oh, we've already spent, how much, Allison, do you remember?
Yeah, we're tracking it. Yeah, it would be nice to track the cost on this, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love it.
Yeah, it should, you know, for the whole thing, you know, till the entire evolution, would be interesting to know.
Oh, yeah, yes, I mean, I'm sure somewhere online, someone's gonna ask us, and we'll be able to have that number.
Right, be nice to know.
I'm actually kinda curious too.
Yeah, me too.
We haven't gotten a lot.
And if you went in, went into the Wayback Machine and pulled out pass records for this cost, I'll bet.
No, I don't think we ever got the town attorney involved like that, we tried to handle it.
No? Never got. Never spent any money any other way?
No.
My understanding is they just kept kicking the can down the road, and really just paying the service to it.
Well, we know that, yeah, yeah.
We're paying the price for it now.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
Okay.
Any thoughts on, you have a special on this?
No, I'm fine with it.
So we have a motion, we have a second, so, all those in favor of paying, uh, getting Richard Bartlett and Associates to take and survey the easement on Kelsey Road for us, for not to exceed twenty-five hundred bucks?
Yep. Yeah, I'd suck four pins.
All right. All right.
Do you want me to write that on here, not to exceed?
What's that? Not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yep.
Probably get it taken, sign that anyway, don't worry.
Right, this is a clean copy, it's on silent.
Is that the one out here?
Is that, is that a contract, is that what it is?
Um, I made on a bunch of copies, they, they all came, you know, electronic, so this is.
I thought there was one here.
Cause it, cause he doesn't specify on here how many pins he's gonna put in, does he? I didn't see it.
I think you put that on there.
It says per pin, so.
Per pin, there's four that were requested, four, yeah.
Yes, yes.
We opted to say that somewhere, I just didn't see it.
I think there was community in with Jeff, that he sponsored through the four corners.
Yeah, I know, it's on this document, I think. Otherwise, he would go nuts and put in a pin every ten feet, I don't think you would do that, but, yeah, it'd be similar.
Okay, I see what you're saying, because technically, if there's a slight turn in the road, it's supposed to put another pin.
Right, this is square, this thing is square, rectangular, it shouldn't have any more, shouldn't have any bins in it.
This is gonna be a rectangle.
Yep. Yep.
Cause all we want them to do is mark the corners. And then Jeff can run a string to block it off. So, on the, um, the fees, Brian, if, there, there must be fees for filing also on this, right?
Uh, well, no.
That would be, they, for the deed, the warranty deed, yeah, it's gonna be minor, it's like seventeen something or twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah, but that's on our end.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, but that's not what he files, no, because we're gonna have to give this information, certain into the easement language.
Which he, which he's already gotten.
Right.
And then, and then we take, and then we get, like, to sign it, we sign it, and then it gets certified and reported.
Okay.
Yep.
And then it's all good.
Yeah, it's less than twenty-five dollars.
And Jeff can start doing this stuff, so.
I signed it here, it said four towns, Dunbar and Bryan, applied shareable, so Dunbar applied twenty-two October, and down here, I put not to exceed four pins or twenty-five hundred dollars in the middle.
Yep.
Sounds good?
Not people that.
If you can throw in the address and telephone number, you wanna have a consent to the families.
Yep.
All right, what's next on the hipper ridge, gentlemen, do you wanna play with E-reg or?
Oh, let's do E-reg, because that's just fun. Does everybody have a copy?
I do.
All right, so, last meeting, um, I was tasked with going off to collect some cost on E-reg.
Thank you for going with that.
Yeah, no problem, um, so, starting off, I, I went on to the office, well, I went on to several websites, but Office Depot ended up being the, um, the most helpful in terms of equipment. So, um, I have a, uh, Laser Jet Pro four hundred monochrome laser perm at a hundred ninety-nine dollars, so that's a one-time charge, and there is a, um, uh, miker, um, ink that's compatible with that, I have it listed here by part number. You get roughly twenty-seven hundred cop, copies from that, at two hundred and four dollars and ninety-nine cents. And then, um, there's check stock, and there are one thousand checks in a box, um, at fifty-one dollars, and that includes S and H, that fifty-one dollars, it's actually, you know, forty-five bucks, I think, um, just for the stock, but I assume they'd be shipping and handling, so I left it in that number. So, the one ninety-nine is a one-time fee, that, you know, I don't think we would be passing along to the consumer, but the, um, expendables that we would, and it beans up to just under thirteen cents per copy. Um, and then I contacted four towns, Chichester, Lee, New Hampshire, Acworth, New Hampshire, and Jackson. And, um, and I got all this information off their websites, they all have E-reg, and anybody can log on to any of those E-reg sites, and they have a button there for estimated cost, so you fill it out like you're registering your own car, and you get these costs. Chichester, um, you know, let me go down the, the list of, uh, fees here, the first one I'm showing is called, um, I call it a first reg fee. Um, and what that is, or what that particular town does, that's Chichester, you all pay a dollar eighty-five, uh, for a transaction fee, um, to, um, the E-reg people. Um, and I forget exactly how it's broken out, it was a dollar fifty and then thirty-five cents, and I, I forget what, what each of those was, but it's a buck eighty-five. Um, and they all charge that, but they all show it differently, um, in their systems, but they all charge it, so I, um, displayed it here on the spreadsheet. Um, the agent fee, uh, ranges anywhere from two fifty to three dollars, and that's where they're capturing their costs for mailing and stickers. Um, so the, uh, you know, it ranges anywhere from two fifty to three dollars, so that was pretty standard. Uh, a town clerk fee, you pay anyway, when you register your car at the window, or you do it online, and a title fee, um, I, I've shown it here at two dollars, and the only time you pay a title fee is when you're titling a car, or you're making a change to your title. So that isn't applied every time, but I put it here because it's, uh, a potential cost. Um, of the four towns, only one of them has a thing called a transportation tax, so that prompted me to ask what that's all about. Apparently, there's an RSA that allows, um, municipalities to, um, with, you know, voter approval, to incorporate this transportation tax. And the town of Chichester uses that, they collect that five dollars, and then at town meeting, they move that money into their Department of Public Works Fund. So that, it's kinda like the, to me, it's like a user fee, but they're the only town of the four that I talked to that do it, but the folks over at, um, at, um, the E-reg, uh, the, uh, Interware folks who do the E-reg software, they told me a lot of towns do it, but they didn't tell me which ones, so.
No, that's per regis, five dollars per registration.
That is per vehicle, yeah, per registration.
Do you know how many vehicles or registrations she does on, on across them?
Yeah, that's in the town report.
Just, just read it.
I wanna say fourteen.
In Chichester, I believe, is the town roughly our size.
Yeah, yeah.
So, on transportation tax, whatever that might be.
Yep.
Are you saying that if I register my car, or whatever this is, E-reg, I automatically register my car?
Yep.
I have to pay a transportation tax?
No, we wouldn't in Dunbar, because we don't have that, I was just showing you for comparative cost here, Ted, Dunbar doesn't have that.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, if, if you just, this town, Chiche.
Chichester.
How about if you go into the, the, or some town, and you register your car, at the clerk's office, you still pay a transportation tax?
You would if you're going to Chichester, yeah.
So it doesn't matter if it's E-reg?
I don't think you can register your car, oh, oh, yes, no, it does not matter, it's just a fee that that town's collecting, yeah, well, I just wanted to show it, because it's.
Using last year's number, it's four thousand seventy-four, four thousand four hundred and seventy-six registrations, five bucks, that's twenty-two thousand dollars that we could collect that'll go to his just budget.
Right, and you just wouldn't take it for taxes?
Wouldn't take it for taxes, exactly, so it is small money.
Right, yeah, but. And I don't know what that RSA was, um, but they just.
That's a hundred percent what E-reg.
Say that again?
Well, no, it, it, you could, it would be regardless, whether it's E-reg or.
You could do it at the window.
Oh, you could do it at the window.
Oh, it doesn't have to be through E-reg, that's.
Okay.
If the town passes that RSA and adopts it, it happens at the window.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah.
Well, what do you introduce to the town lead?
No, I'm not going to, but I just thought I would mention it, because it was a fee that was, um, shown on the Chichester website, but, and of course, when it didn't show up anywhere else, that's what made me ask.
Yep.
You know, so like when I was on the phone, because I called Chichester and, um, Lee, I spoke with their town clerks to, um, make sure that I was capturing all of the cost, so, I mean, aside of the cost that you would pay, you know, for your vehicle fees to, to your town in your state, those aren't shown here, but these are, um, what I believe are pretty typical costs to go forward with E-reg. And, um, the two towns, the towns that I did speak with, um, they did say that, you know, it was a rough start, because it's change, people don't like change, but those towns are all doing their registrations, dog licensing, vitals, and paying taxes, and they're also using credit cards.
And it's taken off.
So, yeah, it has, yeah, but they said it was a slow start, and I explained that, you know, hey, we're looking at doing, you know, the, the check thing first, and you know, they both thought that that was, you know, wise to, um, start generating, you know, some interest. Uh, they also said that it has decreased the amount of, uh, traffic at their window, and it's a generational thing.
But they don't have any, they don't have any incentive.
Um, I didn't ask for it, Ted, but they might have, I, I didn't ask, I don't know, um, but they, um.
It's definitely a generational.
Generational thing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, young, young people.
Just old groups, you know, wanna compare, and now she right off the truck.
Yeah, I mean, if I was at work, I'd be on my smartphone and go, hmm, done, you know, and that's, but.
Wait for someone to mail, and there you go.
But I'm here so often, I just, just show up, but.
But, on, on these crosses you're showing.
Yeah.
Like the town clerk's fee.
Yeah, you pay that anyway.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, it's a wash.
Yep.
And how about town titles?
Well, you only pay that when you're transacting a title.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's very solid, that, uh.
Yeah. Yep.
And the agent fee, what's the agent?
Well, the agent fee is the only one that's a variable here, um, and that's where they're capturing their cost for doing the E-reg, you know, for the printing of the checks and
The envelope.
The envelope, the stuffing of the envelope.
Stamp, the stamp.
Stamping, the two little tags.
Oh, it's just a handling.
Yeah, so that's basically what that is, that's where they're burying the, um, the cost of, of that. And then the dollar eighty-five that's in there, that, um, that the, uh, Interware people get, they take that right off the top, we don't even see that, we don't handle that.
No, like, it says Interware per transaction, now, when you say per transaction, we do two checks, one for the town, one for state, so would that be a buck eighty-five for each transaction?
No, that transaction is, is the actual transaction that registered the vehicle, it isn't the printing of the document, it's the transaction into, um, Interware.
Right, whether they print one check, two checks, or five checks.
Doesn't matter, or if it's a credit card, it's still a buck eighty-five.
What, what do you mean by first?
Well, they, because sometimes.
Where, where did it say, first registration fee?
Because sometime, sometimes they'll give you a discount, if you're registering more than one vehicle, you'll pay the dollar eighty-five, I mean, you'll pay the dollar fifty, and, and, uh, only pay the thirty-five cents one time, because it's for their check fee. So you pay, so you, if you're registering two vehicles at the same time, you'll pay a dollar eighty-five for the first vehicle, and a dollar fifty on the second vehicle.
But why can't I run this other, what we got last week, there's some towns, they don't even try to do anything, most towns.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what that document was.
Most towns try, try like fifty cents, sixty-five cents?
Yeah, I don't think it's accurate, I don't know what that, all, what she gave us, I don't know what that is.
Where, where did we get?
Linda gave it to us.
It was on our, yeah.
And I don't know what it is.
There was a query that they did up in PSOMA, I think.
Somewhere, yeah, I don't know what it means.
Yeah, or Interware, I think it was Interware.
I, I couldn't figure it out, I, I, I couldn't figure out what it meant, but you can log on to any of those towns, and there's over a hundred of them, that are doing E-reg, and you'll see, and it comes up in a template, and you can plug in your vehicle, and you'll get the cost it would take to register your car in that particular town. But these costs, you know, the dollar eighty-five, town clerk fee, all of that are standard fees.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out what it is that you pay, whether you E-reg or, or do it at the window.
All right, well, if you do an E-reg, you're gonna pay the dollar eighty-five, you're gonna pay the agent fee.
And what's the agent fee, what is that?
It covers your postage and handling and printing of your checks, mailing the documents to your home.
And that's what we, we set.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we set that. And then if you have a title transaction, you would pay the two dollars on that.
So, so basically you're saying for one car.
Yep.
It will cost you four dollars and thirty-five cents more than if you walked into the office.
Correct.
With, uh, which one town you're working at?
Any, any of them.
And all of us.
Some charge three, some charge two fifty.
Yeah, one, well, yeah.
Well, two top lines would be.
Yeah, use, use the three dollar one just for, you know, but you're right.
Right, four thirty-five or four eighty-five.
Yep.
Right.
You would pay that much more than if you came and.
Came into the.
And of course, that, the, the two dollars, or the two fifty or three dollars is what we set.
Yep.
So, right now it costs thirteen cents just to print everything out, and so now you add the, the stamp and a envelope and. And the paper. You're probably up to what, maybe a buck and four.
On paper.
Paper prints it out on, right?
Well, you have to, um, well, we have the check stock already.
Check, no. Sorry, check stock. No, there's no other paper, you just print it out, is there?
Not that more of the, you know, they're always.
That's right.
Uh, given anything else, cause the, um, you know, you just have your registration form and your tags.
Yep, that's right.
Okay. No, I, I, you know, like I said, when I asked, talked to these two town clerks, they were very good. And, um, you know, like I kept asking other, and you have the cost, anything else that I'm not catching. And they, they, you know, this is what they gave me. And like I said, I pulled most of this right off the websites. And then I just walked through it with them, so I understood.
Sounds pretty simple.
Yeah, so, I say, let's go buy a printer, let's go buy some ink, and let's get that license for the state, and let's get rolling. I don't understand any delight.
Sounds reasonable. Well, you gotta set, set the fee though.
Yeah, you have to set the fee.
I think that what's really holding you up is the contract of the state.
Oh, right now it is, yeah. So how do we get off the dime on the contract?
I don't think it's still yet.
Well, wasn't her problem the cost?
Yeah.
She wanted to know what the cost would be and how much we were gonna charge.
Yeah, that's, that, that's what was holding her back.
Yep.
So, well, we got all the information.
Yeah.
So all we gotta do is decide how much we wanna charge for a fee. I, I, I think, yeah, you wanna get this program off the ground, and I, I think it's a good thing, but the higher the fee, I think the.
Right, the less likely people to be.
The more you're reluctant, you're gonna have.
Right, right. And you don't wanna be making money on the fee, you wanna be a break even.
Right.
I mean, it's a cost for envelopes, well, I mean, if you're mailing a plate, it's gonna be more expensive than this mailing out a registration sticker's attached to it.
And I don't know if you can do a plate, that would be a new registration.
You, they, do they do new registrations or is it only renewals?
Yeah, no, they do. They do renew, they do new and renewals.
So that's a place that.
I don't know. I, you know what? That's a phone call. I'll find out.
Yeah, that's, cause that's pretty expensive. I would, I would think you'd have to do some kind of special mailing for that, is that?
I'll, I'll, I will ask.
Based on weight, or more than all those.
That's it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that they can issue the new plates this way, I will find out.
Well, if they can issue new plates and have them a window, then that answers that question.
Yeah.
And then it's just a simple envelope with stickers on it and a stamp.
Yep, I'll find out.
No, we gotta just, um, you know, right through mail, it's immediate mail, right?
Yeah, half a cent, alright, we're gonna have a cent.
Yeah.
Half a cent, yeah.
So, so, what, what's the rate now, forty-nine cents?
Yeah.
So, you're eighty-eight.
Forty-eight, five. Forty-eight, five, yeah.
Wow, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, well, it's more for a community.
Well, it did, because. Right, well, the thing is, we don't have the manpower to go and.
Yeah.
Post office all the time, cause they were, they were inbound.
No, I understand. Ted, do you have any other questions on E-reg thing that I can?
I don't know.
Get answers for?
I think we just table it till we find out that information on the plates and then, um, you know what, then I say, we'll trigger.
Yeah, alright. Okay, alright, me too.
Well, I think, I think.
Best we can.
Yeah, but I, I think you can make that a separate fee, that's a new.
Yeah, I'll find out, cause I.
A new registration, but when you are, I mean, how many points a year is the actual issue?
Cause I was messing around with the web, sorry. Yeah.
Most people buy a car, you use your old plates. It's only when you wanna change, you know, if you're from out of state and need a new plate or.
Yeah, well, we would have to account for that, I think.
I haven't, yeah, no, I understand. I haven't had a new plate in twenty years.
Yeah, cause then maybe a different cost structure, I, well, like I said, I was trying to just play with the system and I couldn't play with it for new registration.
But you can't do new registrations.
Cause of one information that I didn't have, like VIN numbers.
Yeah, okay, so.
Maybe you can do a new registration, that, that's.
No, you can. There's a different button for it.
Why not do it?
Oh, really?
Yeah, there was, there's two buttons. One is for new, one's for renewal. And I clicked the renewal because I couldn't do anything with the new, cause it wanted information I didn't have.
I mean, there's different fees for the new ones that we don't see.
Yeah, I'll, I will have to ask that question. This didn't occur to me.
So we have to set the fee structure accordingly.
I'll do a same construction.
Okay, so, let's, let's stay with the renew, renewal agent fee, yeah. So we're saying it's costing us a stamp, forty-nine cents.
Just round it to fifty, make it easy.
And envelope is, I don't know, we get envelopes for two cents, I can get them from the prison.
They're pretty cheap.
Say five cents.
I think we get like a thousand for what?
Alright, five cents, yes, alright.
Yeah, and I just keep it cheap.
For worlds.
Um, thirteen cents for the, uh, other stuff above, so, man.
Great.
Sixty-eight cents right now. The labor, I guess, if, you know, far as actually mailing it out.
In front of you, but a lot of these guys on this sheet is sixty-five cents.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of them.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Probably just them, you know.
Maybe that's just the cost itself that they were giving us for the stock and that type of thing?
Yeah, I don't know. I'd be guessing. I, I don't know, there's codes on there, but the codes don't mean anything to me.
Okay.
So I wasn't able to make, you know, I think I had better sense calling the actual towns and talking to them about. How they're, you know, what kind of equipment they're using and, um, you know, what kind of cost they're incurred. So I'll do that. I'll, I'll get more, um, definition here on, uh, on the plates. I'll talk to the, um. Interwear folks also. And it's funny too, I asked them if they were using BMSI to do this. They're all going through Interwear. You can go, you can go through BMSI, cause they're a reseller of the product and it doesn't cost you anymore. So you can do that, but it's interesting, they're all going direct to, um, Interwear, to Interwear, which I thought was kind of interesting. Not that it matters, it saves them.
Yep.
So they must be compatible with all the, the different companies that provide.
Well, they all use Clerk Works, cause you have to use Clerk Works to have this work, so they're all using Clerk Works, so.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
That's BMSI, right?
Which is BMSI.
Yeah.
So it's kinda funny. I, I thought it was just interesting that they weren't taking that BMSI path.
Well, BMSI doesn't char, have an upcharge for, really?
No, so it's a passive, yeah.
So it's just a passive. Yep.
That's why I thought it was kinda interesting, you know. I mean, I only talked to two towns, but, you know, it was, you know. A bunch of them on that, um, I also went in to take a look at the, how to pay your taxes. Uh, but you need more information than I had, but a whole list of towns, a big list of towns come up and then you go to your town, click it. And then it brings you into, you know, paying your taxes. Yeah, it's pretty slick.
And that's a, a flat fee also, isn't it?
Yeah, I didn't look at the detail on that, but yeah, there is a flat fee.
Okay. Is Goffstown part of that?
I don't remember. They may be.
I, I thought, I thought they were.
Yeah, they, they could be. There was, there was, I'm sorry, there's over a hundred.
I'll check. I'll, I'll check.
I'd say you could pay your taxes, obviously.
Yeah, I'll check when they, how, you know, I'll go through the process and then.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, go through the process and see what the fees are. I, I didn't look at that. I looked at, you know, just this side of it. And we're trying to get off the dime and, you know, we need to sign a contract and, and I'd like to, I don't know why we haven't processed the contract, I.
Because she, she wanted, she says, once she gets the contract, you have to sign it within, what, two weeks? Something, there was a time, time period, but there was a.
I don't remember, I didn't hear it, but there was a.
Well, that's what she was saying, yeah, she said, yeah.
Should we, should we send this through or should we send?
Now, let me get the rest of the information before we do it.
Okay.
Two dollars, ducks on the road.
Yeah, I'd like to have everything lined up, you know, like halfway.
Well, that's good information.
Alright, yeah, no problem. Do you wanna move into the roofing bids?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, and I haven't finished this, but what I, um, started to do is I took the RFP, that's what you see in the left-hand column. And those are the, just like the major points of things that, um, you know, that we asked for around materials and workmanship, et cetera. Um, I didn't get into like the whole, you know, how it's gonna get installed and all that, but I, I kinda picked through those things. So that's what you see in that column. And then, um, we had two bidders and I haven't finished the bidder B piece of this, but, um, you know, like we asked for, um.